Discuss some issues with the Housing Authority. And as a consequence, we weren't able to get a full house of members of the Housing Authority, but I have a good group here. I want to welcome Rose Harrington. I think this is your first meeting with the City Council. Okay, just keep your eye on that guy right over there. Whenever he will be.
(Laughter).
You'll be okay. So, all right, well, why don't, I'll call the meeting to water and then again, welcome all the members of the Housing Authority who've been with us today. Appreciate your service. Mr. Montgomery, are you prepared to take the lead here?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, we'd like to cover two topics today. First topic would be budget challenges that NRHA will be facing in the near future. Secondly, we want to give an overview of the status of the CNI grant, which I know both these topics are both important to our board and to the council. What I'd like to do is to review with you a little bit of organizational information that updates you since our last meeting in March. Also, talk about some short-term challenges we face currently in this year, and also try to give you a look at some future years. Our board members are with us today. We have a couple that had conflicting schedules that couldn't be with us, but those that are with us today, I'm sure, will take back for our next board meeting, full discussion on today's meeting. NRHA, as you know, five years ago created a strategic plan where we created a vision and a mission for the organization, including four strategic goals. This is the fifth year of that strategic plan. This current year, we plan on updating our strategic plan for another five years, and that will be underway very shortly with the Board of Commissioners. Just to update you, in the spring of the year in March, we were expecting some budget reductions overall because of federal cuts to the budget. As you know, two years ago, our budget was approximately $103 million, and it presently is $89 million. In our various programs that we've had through 2012 and 2013, this indicates that most of our programs, again, are reductions in federal HUD grants to NRHA. Expenditures, generally about 80% of our budget now is directed to our public housing and assisted housing programs, and about 16% goes to development on a citywide basis. Some of the short-term challenges. Last year in March, we did talk about some of the actions that we felt were necessary to reduce the $4 million budget deficit, which included the reduction of 23 full-time positions with the Housing Authority. We requested full funding of city neighborhoods, which the council appropriated in the budget for 2013. And we also asked for a general increase of about $450,000 from the city to help support our initiatives, which was also approved in the budget. NRHA also, to close the $4 million gap, utilized $2.2 million from various reserves and operating funds and revenues generated by the Authority to close that $4 million gap. So I think this is a true effort of partnership between the city and the Housing Authority to meet that $4 million deficit. One of the other pieces that we talked about was what could we do to increase the relationships, especially working throughout the city. And one of the first goals that we had talked to council about was approving, improving on our communications. Those communications have occurred. I think the city manager reported a couple meetings ago to the council about shared services and working with the Housing Authority. Believe me, those communications could not be better than they are today. There's a number of collaborations that have been going on and continue to go on between city departments, especially Public Works and planning, Parks and Rec and open space, and others in the city, which is vital to our communication roles. There's a number of shared services that has been talked about and also implemented. Some of the very large ones is relation to property maintenance, the acquisition, demolition, and disposition of properties. Also, this past year, as we committed to cleaning up a lot of the accounting processes, returned approximately $4.8 million to CBDG and CIP projects that were complete, and these were fund balances returned to the city for reappropriation. Also, we've bought into the community engagement with the city. Our members of staff work very closely with city teams, both on steering committees and task forces. Future budget challenges we see coming our way. One of the large grants, the CBDG, which we've been very instrumental in implementing throughout the city in conjunction with the priorities of the city and the community. As you can see, those funds continue to dwindle, especially on the NRHA perspective, of the percentage of total funds that we've been able to receive each year. And that's not based upon anything other than federal reductions of the program. Also, the home program, which is an important one for us to rehab houses across the city, just from a perspective that several of the council members will recall, the program was brought about in 1992. And so since that time, we've assisted over 600 first-time home buyers in the city. And the other piece of good news is that those that came through our program, we've only looked at about 5% foreclosures out of those total numbers. And that's very good, depending on how you look at the economy, and home closures under foreclosure are across the city and across the country. $75 million was the product of that commitment. And again, you can see that the congressional funding support for this program is almost decreased by almost 50% over the last two years. And that's an important note, both to us and to the city, if we've utilized these funds over the last, you know, 20-plus years. Also, we want to show what the impact is. We talked in March about what we were actually doing in 2012 in these individual programs. And as you'll see, where we're taking the hits is acquisition money, demolition of structures. We seem to be faring the war with developing more homes, a slight increase in that. Rehab assistance is down somewhat because of federal fund reductions. Homebuyer assistance, we're still working with a number of families throughout the city to get them in homes. And we also showed those net decrease of 23 positions. 10 of those were in the development staff area. So we continue to see reductions, again, at the federal level, and the staff capacity we have presently to work in these programs is reduced, so the workload is considerable also.
Cheryl.
Yes, sir.
Not to slow you down, but do you have any idea what the backlog is? I mean, requests?
Well, we have.
If you could go back a slide.
For instance, Mr. Mayor, one of the areas is rehab assistance. Typically, when the fiscal year starts July 1, if we do 30 rehabs, they're all assigned right away. There's a list that starts to build on a citywide basis. So typically, we're about, we're probably double the workload from what we do.
So if you got, if you're doing 90, you could do 180 if you had the money.
Yes.
And that, I see the homebuyer assistance, that's up, but just some magnitude of how short the funds are.
Where do the emergency grants fall in?
That is under the rehab assistance program. And that's another one for repairs to the house that I know you're familiar with. That's another one where the federal funding for that program is also short. We want to talk about the focus on what we will be working on, hopefully, as funds are realized to move forward, both from our board's actions and city council. There's a number of projects throughout the city that we continue to at least have on a work program in identifying resources to continue to work throughout the city. As you know, Central Brambleton, Midtown, and Park Place has been on NRHA's work program for more than 30 years many times. And of course, the support that we work on, projects in East Ocean View redevelopment, including East Beach, continues. 57th Bay is, as you're aware, is a parcel that's prepared and ready for some redevelopment ideas, and we're willing to take a look at that. The demolition of single-family homes has become a priority of the Willoughby community, and over the last couple of years, we've made some progress on demolition and also new housing construction in Willoughby. On our own property, at Grandy Village as an example, council recently approved with our board, putting 16 new apartment buildings on the Grandy property, which is currently underway now. We're also working to complete the funding mechanism for Partray for adding 47 units of new apartments, which is also located on NRHA property.
Cheryl.
Yes, sir.
In the Grandy Village operational project you have going on, how would the demographics change in terms of the ages of the children and seniors and things like that? How would the demographic change? And also, will these 60 apartments be at market rent?
Yeah, these units will be not, it'll be at an assisted level, not quite market, but it'll be higher than the general assisted rental units. The impact we see in the community, there is a senior component that's already there. Part of our plan, which is in the out-years, is to add a senior facility on-site where those seniors could reside. We still feel that there will continue to be families. Family size right now is about 2.5 per unit in the family. So we don't see the demographics of families changing. Seniors, as we all know, that age group continues to increase, but also, part of the plan is to have some senior housing there. Also, in the various neighborhoods, of course, Broad Creek, which has been a matter for both our board, the council, and the school board, we're revisiting the master plan for Broad Creek. Especially, we're recently, NRHA removed 136 sites from Moton, and the removal of those has given us an opportunity to build new housing there. And those planning efforts go on. Matter of fact, later this month, we have a work session in the community on the 22nd, 23rd October to start some of those discussions. And that, again, is jointly with the city and the community on that. Also, we're working with city on a concept at Oakmont North to possibly add some new apartments there. That, again, is involved, and I see that hopefully coming about this coming year. Currently, council's aware that we're working as the contractor for the renovation of the Monroe Building. That's going very well. And again, the goal is to open for next school year on that project. Choice Neighborhoods, we're going to be talking about that as a second part of our presentation this afternoon. And we'll be talking about both the planning grant that's currently underway and the possibility of a transformation plan after that also. We'll cover that in a few minutes. One of the things that I wanted to highlight with the Housing Authority's work, especially currently, this is the 2010 poverty map of the city, showing us the densities of rates of poverty on a citywide basis. The areas outlined with a black outline, which are five, are our public housing communities. Most of our assisted housing, public housing, and initiatives generally land in these high-poverty areas. So the work of NRHA occurs in these high-poverty areas on a citywide basis. And we all know from the activities, both in the community and by the Housing Authority and the city, that these high-poverty areas are areas of special interest to make improvements in.
What percentage, Cheryl, of funding for our public housing communities come from HUD? And how much does the city contribute to that?
Public housing funds is approximately, close to 100% from HUD.
Right.
Yes, sir. The Public Housing Operating Fund, want to talk generally about that. The bullets really tell the story. There's over 3,500 families that we assist in our 12 communities. Average household, as you can see, $8,400 is a very low number as far as an income. And we presently have a couple thousand people on the waiting list for these public housing units. So as you can see, our turnover rate is probably less than 2% a year in public housing, and there's been no new public housing built generally around the country. Public housing, by actions of Congress, basically is being done away with, and all these other options for funding housing programs is coming forward with funds from HUD and so forth. So each one of these things generate a need to provide housing for those that need it, but also falls very short of the funding that's necessary.
Cheryl, I think it's also important to point out that we tend to manage our waiting lists. By that, I mean, they're not always open. So it's not as if we, when we report numbers like this, as if it's the total demand. It's the demand that we've allowed, in essence, onto the list. So it's not total demand. It's allowed demand.
Right.
And we'll close a list, and nobody, you know, you can't come apply.
And there's individuals that both apply for waiting lists for public housing in Section 8. They also apply in other cities that get on as many lists as they can just to try to obtain housing. And then there's a kind of a review process that goes through, they have to review all those applications, see if they're qualified, and so forth by income. So it's a pretty arduous process. Also, when you open the waiting list, you may have, you know, 100 or 200 people that you're going to try to locate, but only maybe when you finish the process, 50 haven't qualified. And then those are housed with the vacancies.
And that same thing, it's important to note, goes back to the mayor's question before about what sort of the backlog in those, some of those housing rehab programs and homebuyer assistance programs. You know, we're pretty frank with people in terms of what we're able to accomplish with the money that we have. So, you know, people aren't going to come apply if they know there's no money and there's no prospect, or some people won't come apply. So it's not true demand when we look at the numbers of backlog. It's sort of what I call managed demand.
Cheryl, are you going to tell us?
What is the kind of, in terms of units?
Generally, it's less than 2% a year. And we're seeing that turnover go down because folks are concerned about where they're going to live, so they're kind of staying put. That also affects, you know, their mobility to move around or look for other options. They're kind of.
Is that in your units as well as in your Section 8 turnover? Or, I mean, when I say Section 8, your Section 8 voucher turnover?
Yes. Section 8 voucher turnovers, probably, I don't know, is it about the same or less?
No, it's a lot, it's a lot less. We get an attrition of about maybe 10, 10 a month of people leaving the program for various reasons.
So that's 120 a year out of about 2,900.
2,800 vouchers.
So that's a very small turnover. The, this is one that we're presently working with the Board of Commissioners on now, the capital funds for our public housing. We have seen a pretty drastic decrease in capital funding, as you can see. Typically, for the last 10 years or so, it's been hovering around $6 million a year. In '11, it went down to 5.5. This year, it went down to 4.9. And we've just completed a study of all of our public housing communities, and the number that's pointed out there at 10.7, that's what our age of our housing stocks tell us we should be committing to public housing on an annual basis to keep the properties up as far as maintenance and repairs and living conditions, both inside and outside the buildings. So we're about halfway in those funding amounts. And again, we'll be working with our board over the next couple of months to get into this 20-year plan for capital needs for public housing.
Cheryl, I think it's also important for the council to understand that these are not in constant dollars or in current dollars, they're not inflation-adjusted. So when he says 10 years back, we were getting X amount of dollars, that's in those, you got to do, you got to do the inflation adjustment to really understand how much the funding's come down. So all the numbers that we give to you are not in any way inflation-adjusted, they're just the real numbers at the time.
We'll get a chance to ask questions at the end of the presentation.
Before we get, before I forget this, how are we rated as far as HUD is concerned in our public housing communities?
Standard performer.
I'm sorry?
Standard performer.
And so what's above standard?
High performer.
And then below that?
You are in trouble.
Yeah. Now, a couple years ago, Diggs Park, we got a pretty scathing report as far as Diggs Park was concerned.
Yes.
Okay, and at that time, were we below standard?
Yes, for that particular housing. And a lot of Mr. Riddick's attributed to the age of the housing community and the lack of capital money to make certain improvements.
But we know we had just put 20-something million dollars in Diggs Park at that time.
And we've put, we've put $6 million a year overall in all 12 public housing communities also.
Let me point something out about Diggs Park, Councilman Riddick, because it frustrated us a lot at the board level. We've got, we, we are not without our problems in various places. Diggs Park was an example where we were doing an ERA project. So we were tearing up the roads, and we were renovating and so forth. And we appealed it two or three times, I think. We got marked down because we were tearing up the roads to rebuild them, literally. We got marked up because the cove-based moly went in the hallway because we tore it up because we're putting new stuff in there. And the big signs there, I mean, it's all that sort of stuff, so that, it's, I'm not here to say that we don't have issues, but, and we just looked at our reports some in our last board meeting, or next-to-last board meeting, where we looked at our scores for every single entity that we're involved with, every housing area. And some of them were not where we want them to be. But I will also tell you that it's, it's a crack in the sidewalk that's like this, you get written up. If there's some glass on the ground from the night before, and it happened to be, you know, not an excuse, but just a fact, it happened to be the morning of trash pickup, so there was lots of stuff out there, and so we got written up for that. So some of this stuff we're less concerned about than other things. And we try to get deep down in the numbers to understand really what our situation is. But, but there is room for improvement in some of our areas, for sure.
That particular year, Mr. Riddick, was when they did spend, they did spend monies over in Diggs Town, but Cheryl wasn't there, he wasn't the director at the time, but they had spent about $6 million or so in fences. They hadn't done anything to improve the units themselves. And I think that's, that was a part of the conversation in terms of the rating, because they had not done anything to the physical units, but they had spent money in, to put those green fences up, to the tune of about $6 million, might have been a little more. I recall that incident.
Yeah, and the ERA situation I mentioned was actually across the street, but it's indicative of some of the things we battle with that we don't think are as important as some of other things. But we have to live by the rules that are set.
Okay, on the housing choice vouchers, as you can see, there's over 2,800 vouchers serving about 6,800 residents, which is about 3% of the population. And the average income of voucher holders is $16,419, which is about double what the average public housing resident income is. The waiting list on the vouchers, again, is a huge number, and we continue to face difficulties even with funding for the voucher program versus what our need is and what the cost is. One of the huge challenges for us is how we manage the program. HUD has actually given us money for vouchers, but they're not giving us money to manage the program. That's one of our biggest downsides right now. That's with staffing, because anytime a person's income changes, someone's added or deleted from family, they have to come in. So it requires a lot more administration now of these individual portfolios of these over 3,000 individuals. So it does take a lot of administrative work. And of course, these payments that are due to us from HUD, again, this is one of the areas where it's decreased, and the Housing Authority has set aside over the years and worked with HUD on reserves. All those, as we've mentioned, that were depleted this year. We have no more reserves to cover any charges that we run into in the voucher program. So we're waiting for congressional action on the housing programs, both for public housing and the voucher system, to see how we stand up. In regards to Mr. Riddick's question about our performance, for the last several years, our voucher program has been a high performer. So we felt that this program is well-run. We've had to make some very difficult choices in the last several months about funding the program, and we're not adding any more individuals to this program, and the waiting list continues to grow. This chart depicts the movement in administrative funding. As you can see, you know, our, our needs are much greater, probably a half million dollars. And this half million dollars, again, we look at some of our own financial resources to pay for the federal program, which should be directed in another direction other than what we have to spend it on, but it's the priority of the Housing Authority to fund these vouchers and keep those individuals in their homes. Some of the continuing challenges, again, we see that a lot of these services that are on the street right now, those demands increase. Our budget is balanced this year at $89 million. We know that going forward, the next several months is really going to shape what kind of activities and programs we can continue to support. And the main thing, to stay with our mission, we're trying to maintain our capacity to continue to serve those that we serve today. Increasing those services looks like a mission impossible for the future right now based on the funding that we receive. So if there's any questions, Mr. Mayor, I'd be glad to.
I have a few questions. My first question concerning the Section 8 vouchers. I know that you can't direct folk where to live as it relates to these vouchers, but you do have people to call, call in from time to time, landlords, to tell you that they are willing to put their house up as a Section 8 unit. I just would respectfully ask that you guys look at the census poverty track to make sure that when, when folk do that, that we're not creating more problems. I know we need housing, but at the same time, when you begin to concentrate, we begin to create that wheel all over again. we, we, we begin to create that wheel all over again in a different area.
I wish we had brought, we have a, a scattered plot of where our Section Eight housing is or, or Housing Choice Voucher Program housing is. That's the newer name for the program. And it is diverse, geographically diverse. We, we can send you a copy of that. It's, it's relative to that question or that point, it's pretty impressive how diverse it is. It, you know, it's, it is not concentrated, um, not near as much, obviously, as the, uh, as the public housing units, not because they were concentrated when they built them. They built them all in one place by definition.
Right, but I, I.
But yeah, absolutely.
My, my second question is, as relates to the challenges, you guys have, uh, challenges, challenges that you have, uh, with, uh, funding for, uh, your public housing, um, tenants as it relates to the rent. We talked about it sometime, we talked about site-based management. And I know that you guys, for every dollar, well, you used to get a dollar, I guess it was a dollar, you get about eighty, eighty-seven cents now for a dollar that you get from HUD. And so, every year, you're getting less money, but you're asked to maintain the same standard. And so, in terms of your long-term plan, whether it be five-year, ten-year, how do you see you guys mitigating that gap?
Well, let me, let me say something. Cheryl will just stop me if I misspeak, but we probably have two major, um, strategic issues going forward, and that's one of them. And annually, as you know, HUD determines how much it costs to run a unit or the numbers of units that we have, and they come up with that irrespective of, of us making the decision. They say it costs a dollar to run this unit. And then, at some point in the year, and that's a key, key situation, at some point in the year, and we're on a fiscal year basis starting July, at some point in the year, they tell us how much money they're going to give us of that dollar to run the unit. And it's not in July one. It's sometimes been the following calendar year. It can be as late as January, but certainly, it's months later. So, we start the year off knowing it's going to cost us a dollar to run this unit, but we have no idea how much money they're going to give us until they decide that. And it's ranged from ninety-four or ninety-two, and what is it this year, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine?
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two this year. So, the bottom line is it's been coming down, coming down, coming down, coming down, but it varies. So, at the end of the day, the, your Housing Authority, your redevelopment Housing Authority does not have the wherewithal, does not have the, does not have the, um, does not have monies to cover that. And we have no ability to raise money. We do have, uh, we have been able to squirrel away reserves over time, and you heard, um, Cheryl say that the Housing Choice Voucher Reserve was taken back by the federal government, said we'd had some money there to cover situations. That's gone. Our reserves are very, very, very slim. And we do have a couple of income-producing properties that we've used to help balance the budget. But at the end of the day, um, Mr. Vice Mayor, that's a huge problem for this city. Because we, we don't have an ability to generate revenue. All we can do is ask for, you know, ask for it from the federal government or from, from another source, including the city.
Or, or we can adapt, uh, our model to a site-based management approach, whereas if we know that revenue is declining every year, at some point, we got to create a strategy that, you know, that levels off below ninety, or they, they giving us ninety-two percent. We know each year that it comes down, so we need the budget for eighty-seven percent or eighty percent, you know, in years, uh, before they make that determination. If they give us more, you have more to work with. But you got a population of people that you got to take care of. You got senior citizens, you got these folk that have been in public housing for thirty, forty years, that you can't ask to go to work tomorrow. So, we have to take care of them. You have, uh, folk with disabilities that we have to take care of. But you have another, uh, uh, community of people that are able-bodied, that can get up and go to work every day, okay? And so, when we move to the site-based plan, as we try to integrate these community with, with, with some, some moderate, some, some, what, twenty percent, thirty percent, forty percent of AMI, then we can start that process of instead of charging someone fifty-four dollars a month for rent, a hundred and fifty dollars a month for rent. Because at the end of the day, you want to make sure that those senior citizens and those folk with disability not only have a place to stay, but have a decent place to stay. And so, I think at some point, our model has to turn, whereas we, we, we address this sooner than later, because at the end of the day, the government, again, is giving less money to do what you guys need to do. And so, it won't come upon this body like we never had the conversation. I just think that strategically, we need to, again, begin to get our citizens, uh, ready for, uh, the future of our public housing program. Just like, if you just take the, the, uh, Broad Creek model as you move to self-sufficiency. People that live, that were a hundred percent, uh, out of the equation, now they're paying, uh, something into the equation. So, again, as long as you create the environment in which people will understand the rules upfront early on, a new generation of people to be able to adapt to it, I think that we can mitigate that problem. But I would just ask you, uh, to, to, uh, keep your eye on that. And if, if you need to bring it into this body, and we need to, again, adapt the policy, begin to work with our citizens, put the infrastructure in place, let people know what the rules are for people that can adapt and have a decent place to live five, ten, fifteen years down the road. I think we need to do it. It's in the best interest of all of our citizens. Uh, the, uh, the other question I have, we talked about acquisition and demolition. I appreciate the manager for working with Norfair Redevelopment Housing Authority to look at, with, with, again, revenues being, uh, uh, short, that we, again, look at each other's strengths and work collaboratively, collaboratively together in terms of looking at what NRHA does well and what the city does well, and, you know, continue to work in terms of acquisition and demolition. Closeout projects, you alluded to a lot of these projects that we've been in. We've been in some communities thirty, forty years, uh, twenty-five years. At some point, we got to have a closeout strategy. When do you anticipate closing out some of these projects? We're going to open up new projects with St. Paul Quadrant, got a few other projects that are open. But at some point, you got to close out those other projects so we can, again, give the right monies, uh, to the projects that we're, we're beginning to, ready to start.
If, if you're looking for an answer, the answer is we don't know. We live by the, by, unfortunately, we live by the, the nature of grants, whether they come from the city or somewhere, or the, the federal government or somewhere else. You're, you know, as well versus anybody in the room on Brook Creek and where that money came from. And unless we got that money to do that, um, either from, from HUD or from the city or some of the private money that we leverage, it couldn't happen. We're struggling right now with the capital funds just to keep the places that we have reasonable. So, it's a huge issue, Anthony. It's a huge issue nationally. We're not the only ones who are seeing housing authorities close. We've got to find a new model, because the current model isn't being funded to be, uh, sustainable. So, we, you're absolutely right. And unfortunately, um, and I, I've heard my mayor talked about it before, it's all getting pushed down to the localities. You know, whether it's the state pushing stuff to localities or whether it's the federal government pushing stuff to localities, they're backing away. And, you know, we have to make a decision locally if we're going to be able to do something about that or not. So, I think it's extremely important what you brought up, and it's a huge issue for us. And we don't have a good answer.
Are we aware of other models in other cities that are dealing with the same problem, but?
Yes, this is a national problem.
But I mean, are there cities that appear to be more progressive or something, something we could go look at or something we could adapt? Because obviously, this thing is coming at us.
There's areas that adapt, adapted a, a site-based management.
What is site-based management? What is it?
It, it's basically that, uh, when people that can't afford to pay more into the pot, pay more into the pot, rents, because less money is coming in to Norfair Redevelopment Housing Authority. And so, what they've done, they basically say, you got to, you got to find that money. We're not going to give it to you. And so, now you can create this, this formula. And what they tried to do is create, build new units, create mixed-income opportunities, look at the, uh, median income. For example, I'll take Granby Village, for example. They put units in there, they're, they're public housing units, but they're assisted public housing units. So, now you're able to get twenty percent, thirty percent, forty percent, fifty percent, even sixty percent of AMI. So, that means they could charge more money for the rents. Then they come in and they, they build the units, they use low-income housing tax credits to try to maximize the money that they can get from the units and try to gr- create a blend to attract more people, uh, within that community that are working, you know, but below the poverty line, but are working, that they can get more rent from. And that's the way you kind of offset that, to make sure that those folk who can't pay continue to have a decent place to live and raise their kids. So, that's one model of site-based management. So, it's not to take folk that are, uh, that can't pay or people that are working hard every day and this is what they make, to try to say to them, no, you got to pay more. No, it's to try to create a blend to bring more people in at higher rents, but that requires you to do more aesthetically and from an architectural standpoint to improve the quality of life in those communities. So, that's what folk have done in other communities to try to, to, to try to mitigate that shortfall.
Mr. Vice Mayor, we, we have, over the last three years, as you know, used, uh, low-income housing tax credits as a vehicle for some of our projects, and even those funds are being reduced. So, you know, I, I think, uh, the options are decreasing, uh, for funding streams, and that is a, a resolution, but even in that area, funds are being impacted.
I got just two questions, last question. You, you said you, we got four, you, you guys clicked, you scrubbed your books, and you had four-point-five million dollars that you, um, sent back to the city. Those funds were reprogrammed when they sent back over to, about other programs or what do we do with that?
I think it was a, some of a mixture.
Yeah, yeah, there was a mixture of funding options, uh, both in the CIP and the CBDG funds.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what that, what was it that you did with the money?
Uh, the question was, the, the money we sent back to the city, it was reprogrammed in both CIP and other CBDG projects. Some of those funds flowed back to NRHA to, to, uh, existing projects for this year's calendar, as an example.
Was it about half? I don't recall the percentage, but.
I mean, some of the funds were able, you know, to, to fund your FY-13 capital improvement program as you appropriate some money to come from bonds and some money to come from your fund balance. So, so, part of our new funding in FY-13 really did come from the ability that the city had to improve money for fund balance. And, and the CDBG program, uh, I, I think because of time-witness issues and HUD, uh, concerns about expenditure rates, a, a lot of that was, uh, programmed for site improvements. Some of those within, uh, the Department of Public Works projects, but we got some of that back as part of our FY-13 program.
My, my last question. You, uh, you, you guys alluded to, uh, apartments in Granby Village, the rental. The, uh, are these units thirty, forty, fifty, sixty percent AMI? What, what are these units?
Uh, the, the sixteen new units are part of our transitional program where there will be, uh, again, just to clarify, rather than raise rents, everyone in public housing who has assisted housing pays thirty percent or roughly thirty percent of their income. So, we don't raise rents on, on tenants. They're just calculated based on their ability to pay. But in terms of those new homes, as well as the twenty-two homes we built, um, uh, four years ago in, in, in Granby Village, uh, that's part of a transitional program where I think folks have to have, be able to afford, uh, a rent of about four-hundred dollars a month now. So, it's, so, so folks who go into those, uh, new units are, are closer to being able to, um, leave the community and, and work without assistance.
But are they, so, what I'm saying is, are they twenty percent?
About forty-five percent.
Forty-five percent. They have started from twenty, what, a blend or just?
That's the minimum required.
That's the minimum required, forty-five?
Right.
And capping at what?
There's no cap.
There's no cap?
There's no cap. But the operating subsidy reduces as their, as their ability to pay goes up.
Okay, that's good.
What are some of the highest rents you have out of Granby? Eleven, twelve-hundred dollars?
It would be in the four-fifty range.
That's the highest rent you have over there?
Right. Sir, at some point, when we reach, uh, for our, most of our units, we have what's called a ceiling rent or a flat rent. And that has to be adjusted each year and approved by HUD as part of our annual plan. So, folks, once they come into public housing, they can make a hundred thousand dollars a year and still stay there, but their, their, their thirty percent rent caps out at about four-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month before, you know, it's maxed. It doesn't go up after that.
And I don't think we have anybody living in public housing.
No.
They could at once.
But in terms of your matrix, I mean, you know, you're kicking a can down the road. At some point, with less money, and you have maintenance and upkeep in all of these units. You know, at some point, you, you, you have to see in the near future where this body may be on the hook for the maintenance and upkeep of these units. And, and so, I, I, that's why I think it's just so critical to come up with a plan, because with all of the things that, uh, you know, with education and public, uh, uh, public safety and all the, the other things, that one other, adding maintenance of public housing, is going to be a major challenge. Understanding that, you know, people deserve to live in a decent place. And so, we can't go backwards in terms of having deplorable housing, that we can't attract people and then continue, I, I mean, then create another cycle of poverty within the city. So, I would just say to, you know, the administrations around the table that, you know, I, just like we deal with any other crisis or making sure that we get out in front of this, this issue, that we come up with a plan that we can look long-term, that will give us the results that we need to be able to, to continue to provide quality, uh, and affordable housing to our citizens.
I agree with the affordable housing, but what I, I don't believe that the wolf is at the door in terms of the city having to subsidize maintenance. If, I think the Housing Authority needs to take a close look at a lot of the things they have, such as legal fees. I've always wondered, you know, about your retainers and how much money you're spending in legal fees and some of the things that we might be able to do. The Housing Authority does not have the same, um, goals as it did when it was first created back in the forties, when they recognized, you know, the deplorable standards of people living in what used to be old downtown off of Bermuda Street and things like that. And now, with, um, uh, redevelopment, we don't have that many redevelopment. We had the Hundredville redevelopment project, three or four phases of that. But with, um, uh, eminent domain things changing or laws the way they've changed, a lot of the things that the Housing Authority did in terms of redevelopment, we won't be doing anymore. And so, um, light removal, uh, we might have, uh, some, some sites that we need to remove, not necessarily as far as light is concerned, but as far as crime is concerned. Alexander Street is a prime example that the Housing Authority needs to go in, acquire, uh, that, that whole quadrant and get rid of that, that, that element over there that's, uh, that's, that's bringing down that community. So, the Housing Authority, I think if they, uh, for example, I've always thought that, like, as far as development is concerned, with things being the way they are now, do we need a development department in the Housing Authority and a development department in the city? Human resources, do we need both? We mentioned shared services, so I'm just wondering, uh, and I'm not talking about putting people out of jobs, you know, you can do it through attrition at both sides. But I'm just wondering what the Housing Authority could do to tighten its belt so that if, uh, it does come to a point that they are not getting the funds that they need for maintenance at, uh, at, at, from HUD, then they'll be able to stand on their own feet. Education and a lot of the things that we have around the table, public safety, I would hate to, for them to, meaning the Housing Authority believes that they have a haven. There's nobody that believes in safe, sanitary, uh, living for citizens anymore than me. But I just don't want them to believe that they can just come here and, and find a haven, when actually, if they tighten their belts, you know, they might be, if they look within, they might be to find how much money they could save within, as opposed to just saying, well, let's go acquire to the city and get some money. That's just my opinion.
Mr. Riddick, we're working hard in that regard. If you, um, look at the trend that we've, uh, been under for the last five or ten years, last year, we were at a hundred and two million, this year, we're at eighty-nine million. year we were at 102 million, this year we're at 89 million. That, that's, that's over a 10% cut. The department, not the Department of Development, Department of Development does something very different than the Development Division at NRHA, but there is overlap with other city departments. But we've cut our staff there from 40 to 30. So we are, we can't spend what we don't have, we have to cut our, we have, we have no ability to raise revenue per se. So we've been cutting and we'll continue to cut, because at the end of the day, we gotta pay the bills. But, you know, certainly we'll continue to look hard, and the more places we can share things together, the more duplication that we can get rid of, and certainly the more efficiencies that we can realize, we want to do that, and we're working very hard to do that.
You know, I, I guess I represent every public housing community, except Mooton when it comes back, and I don't know whether it's not coming back. I know I said when it comes back, it's not to be public housing, it's going to be...
No, we're going to use the same methodology that we use. We're going to do 50, we're bringing back 50 assistant units, 50 market rate rental, and 37 single-family home ownership opportunities.
One of the things that gets me is that our residents live in public housing, live in fear of being evicted, live in fear of being evicted. I know of a case where, summer before last, a woman who lived in Young Park when it worked over at the hotel, she made $50 and was evicted. And, and a lot of the participants, we have a South Side Task Force, and so we wonder, and we used to have it downtown, but we have it all in the community on the South Side in an effort to get the residents from public housing to participate. They're afraid to come, that they'll be evicted. If they come and express themselves in terms of what's happening, they're afraid that they would be evicted. The city of Norfolk is fighting homelessness, but because the subsidized housing market is so tight and so competitive, that, you know, sometimes what the housing authority is doing is counterproductive to what we're trying to do. You know, some of the persons who most need the housing, you're putting them out, you know, if they stomp their toes.
Mr. Riddick, I don't think we're putting anybody out that stumps their toes. I will tell you that we've struggled. In fact, we were in a meeting last week where we talked about some of those, and I'll give you an example. Under the federal law, if you don't declare your total income according to certain criteria, a certain time, and so forth and so on, you're considered to be committing fraud. And when the federal government comes and tells us that some resident has underreported their income and they do that...
About $50.
It doesn't matter, it's a federal law.
I'm only, I'm only, you know...
Let me finish, you don't mind, let me finish. We're not making up those rules, we're merely following the federal law, and the feds have been very clear to us that we either follow the federal law or we'll have our own problems. So we've been working, in fact, we have a program that they're not allowing us to use currently, where we have let people work out their, their fraud, is what the feds call it, work out their fraud by basically letting them back, pay it back over time. The feds have come back to us recently and said, "Don't do that anymore. If they commit fraud, they're, and you don't have any place to warn them, they're out, period." And it's not rules that we make as a board, it's not our administration setting policies, it's the federal law and what we're required to do. So whether we like it, and I can tell you, we spent a lot of time talking about it, particularly in the last month, or whether we don't, we're sort of in a rock and a hard place, and the government considers people that underreport their income by $50 or $500, it doesn't matter to them, there is no sort of degree. In the law, they said they've committed fraud, and you're going to let them out of the program. So I hear you, and I understand the consequence of that, and we struggle with that, but we're in a position where we either thumb our nose at the federal government and take the risk of what they would do with that, or we follow the law. So I don't think we're, I don't think we've ever done anything in my, in my tenure, and that's been 11 years, that I've ever heard of, and if I, if I heard of it and I thought it was true, I'd jump up and down, where we're threatening people to come to meet and speak out, or do something that's within our sort of control, not within the law's control, and I hope that's not the case. I can tell you, the board doesn't, doesn't exemplify that sort of behavior, that's not how we operate, I don't, I don't think the staff is doing that. We have 300 people, and if somebody's done that at some point, I can't, I can't know everything, but that's not our MO. We have 300 caring people who are doing their jobs every day to try to help these folks, and I don't think we're, we're in the business of threatening anybody. If we are, I'd certainly like to know about it.
Okay, oh, and then we're going to go to Andrew, okay.
Well, my question kind of piggybacks off of Paul's in that, from time to time, periodically, do you all either send out notifications or reminders or anything like that, just to let people know? I mean, I know they probably sign a bunch of stuff when they first go in, just like, you know, everybody does when they're first hired, and then you commit a crime or commit fraud or whatever, and you go, "I didn't know that." And then somewhere 10 years ago, they signed something. So periodically, do you remind people that these are the requirements, and this is what you have to continue to do?
Yes, ma'am. Every year, they're, they're all recertified, we have a lot of tenant management meetings, and I think the residents sometimes know the rules better than we do.
Can we ask the same question last week?
Terry.
Nobody can question the, the hard work and efforts that NRHA has done in our neighborhoods, and obviously, a great deal of resources financially, both from the feds and otherwise has come in. But it seems to me that all this good work that you're doing, and it would seem to me that we need to have some reports back on how that's worked out, that there should be benchmarks that you've established, poverty level in the neighborhoods you've invested in, educational level, crime stats, what the physical health of these residents have been, vocational training, I mean, aren't we, aren't we about that we're hoping to get people out of these areas, out of these pockets? But, so what I'd love to hear from you all is, in this report, that, you know, we put all this money into rehabbing these neighborhoods, and look what it's done, or it hasn't done, but, but I, I haven't seen that. And if it's there, I'd love to see it sometime, because I'd like to know what the poverty level is after X amount of dollars in energies have been placed in these neighborhoods. Because that's, that's the benchmark that I think we should all be looking at, instead of, "Oh, my gosh, the money is leaving." Maybe the, I mean, you know, I'm just saying, maybe the money should be leaving because the money that's been put in hadn't helped.
We, we have...
Or has helped.
Yeah, or has helped and it's fixed.
We have two separate...
That's question number one.
We have two separate areas that we sort of work in with that regard, in that regard. And when we do redevelopment in neighborhoods, we measure our success differently than when we spend money in public housing communities. We spend money in public housing communities, and we have those numbers, I'd be happy to give them to you and share them with you. We look at them at least annually. We look at graduation rates from school, we look at job rates, we look at homeownership rates of people coming out, and all those things, and we celebrate them at least once in a big way each year to sort of recognize people. They got GEDs, graduated from high school, graduated from college, moved to a homeownership situation or whatever. That's how we measure and look at metrics in that area. In the redevelopment side, it's very different. We're not in the same relationship with neighborhood as we are with the public housing community that we're functionally fiduciary of. So we look more at physical things. We don't measure, did somebody get a college degree? Did somebody graduate from high school? Did somebody get a GED? We look at the physical properties of the neighborhood and say, did we change the physical properties of the neighborhood? Is it now, is the income level higher? You know, the houses better? Are they more attractive? I mean, attractive to demand? So we don't necessarily, we're not working with those people on their job skills or on their other skills that make them successful in life. We're really doing more about the bricks and mortar in redevelopment neighborhoods than we are, because that's what we're charged to do. We don't have money for programmatic stuff to help the folks, but we have that, we have that.
My argument, Chef, would be that if you are putting money into a neighborhood, and I'll be frank with you, this is what we're working on at Park Place, is that if you just keep putting money into a neighborhood, and the market value of those homes, if the poverty level of those neighborhoods, if the crime isn't any better, bricks and mortar have gotten us nowhere. And we all know that with some of this lower-than-market-level housing that goes in, that's relatively cheaply built, within a decade, it's no longer attractive bricks and mortar. I mean, I think there needs to be a real thought onto where that money is going, I mean, what do we care about? Do we care about bricks and mortar, or do we care about the health of our communities? And I think it's incumbent on us to think about that for these rehab projects and for our acquisition and redevelopment, that we're, you know, we're really pushing the envelope, we're pushing that meter, and I'm hoping that, I think Anthony's getting there, I know Cheryl is part of this, working with us on some of the things that we're doing at Park Place and with the Hampton Roads Community Foundation, that we try to take a different approach on this. And I think it's incumbent on us to keep this movement going. So I'm, and, and very frankly, I will tell you, those stats are all there. If you look at the report, even just the planning council puts out, they can tell you what the poverty levels are in each neighborhood, so, and, and educational levels and all those. My second question is, you know, we've got a new head of housing up at H, at HUD, somebody near and dear to our hearts, and he's pretty excited about it, I know before he left. Are we aware of changes as far as...
Absolutely. Now, we've had him down for visits already.
I just wondered if that was changing our approach or our direction. Marcus, have you, are you aware of anything yet? I know it's early, but...
Yep, we've been reaching out and have discussions.
Good. So I'm hopeful that you'll keep us up with that, that whether or not there are some different ways we're going to approach housing in, you know, in our neighborhoods and elsewhere.
Oh, Teresa, we, we keep that, well, I could tell you today, you know, just to kind of speak to, I could, I could speak to Broad Creek more than I could speak to anything else. And I do know when we went in there, it wasn't about bricks and mortar, it was about people. And so the first thing we did do was put the infrastructure in place, in terms of not, not so much worrying about, again, the bricks and mortar, more so being consumed with letting people make their own life choices. If we were investing people, then they can make the decision where they want to live, where they want to work, and they weren't at the, under the thumb of the housing authority or any other authority for that matter. And so we met people where they were and gave them the choice whether or not they wanted to come back. But I can tell you, crime is down in that community over 100%. I can tell you that if we continue the work that we will, that we're doing, that instead of that, that the new school will, over a period of time, will not be a Title I school, because of the incomes that we would have been able to attract.
Clearly that's breaking up the concentration.
But that, that...
But I just think that everything we do should have benchmarks, and we should be, go back every year and look at how we're doing. We should have a scorecard on all of this, because just to keep doing it without figuring out how we're getting along is not what we want to do.
It's a little harder when you're doing infield than when you're tearing down 90 acres and replacing. The other thing is, it's a big difference when, when you have public housing, like some of our public housing community, you have a mandate in terms of what you have to do to the, in terms of the upkeep and the maintaining, you have management staff, you have internal staff within the housing authority that are supposed to be working with the residents, hopefully moving them to self-sufficiency. But I went to HUD, I went to state, up to the Richmond, and I went to Washington DC to ask for special legislation to put some of the rules in place that we have in that community, because it is not the traditional rules that you have in public housing, you know. So we asked for some things to allow us to be successful that we couldn't do, we couldn't do tomorrow, because they probably wouldn't let us do it, but we were able to create a, 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 a plan that would allow us to be successful, in terms of holding parents accountable, you know, making sure kids were in school. If they weren't in school, you jeopardize your lease. If you, if you lost your job, you had 30 days to find a job. So all of those things were important in terms of trying to create a, 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 a community opposed to just building houses. And so I hope this guy, I hope that we can have some, some real conversations with, what's his name?
Maurice.
Maurice, as relates to understanding the challenges that we have within the city of Norfolk, and allowing us to move our citizens to self-sufficiency. But, you know, we're going to talk about the St. Paul quadrant next, but again, you're going to have to have an ideology and a philosophy in, in terms of dealing with, trying to create a, a community there. And so, and I, I'd be glad when we begin to, I hope today that we have that philosophical conversation about, you know, what we, instead of the bricks and mortar, how we're going to accomplish this, and, and what the criterias will be as relating to the people, because we talked about the bricks and mortar, but I don't think we really had a conversation about the people, and, and what the expectations are, and what does, what does growth look like in that community for people? So I guess that's, we're going to talk about that next.
All right, it was a great conversation. Just real quickly, I look forward to working with the housing authority on trying to push some of this property that's down in Ocean View that's just been sitting there, and I think this is, you know, money that could be, you know, help you with some of your problems, help us with some of our problems. But I, I'm just, I get frustrated, this is, you know, two years on council, and these properties are still open, and I know there was some debt and some things that needed to be paid off to fix some of the issues there, but what can the city do on our side to help push this, so that we can have these conversations? I mean, the 5th through 7th Bay Area was being talked about at Homorama on Friday night. There are people that are interested in that area, so let's get that, you know, taken care of. What can we do to help with that and push that conversation forward? And start filling some of these lots and getting some tax, tax collections on it, and instead of this, a sign that says "Housing Authority" on it. I want to get these, these taken care of, I think the community is ready for it. What do we need to do?
It's infrastructure. That is a huge infrastructure role right there. We have a plan. We, we knew at least a few years ago what it was going to cost to do that, and we're happy to share that with you. It's changed, obviously, as it went from, from third to seventh, to fifth to seventh, but there's infrastructure needs.
And Chesapeake area, Chesapeake street area doesn't need infrastructure.
Unfortunately, everywhere seems to need infrastructure.
Not as much, though, it's the...
That's one of the things we did over in Broad Creek, you know, when we swapped some land, which was a great deal, I think for everybody, we swapped some land with the school board or the city to move the school site, and that site wasn't being developed for exactly the same reason, because we don't have the infrastructure money to, to put in to develop the homeownership or the, whatever goes there.
So where's, where's the disconnect then with, when we're looking at a budget, and we've been looking at this for three years now, we look at a three-year budget, I don't see any money in the budget, I look at last budget before I got on council, there isn't money being budgeted for this, knowing that there could be success here?
Y'all, y'all make those decisions at this level, at the council and city management level? We make recommendations, we make requests, but at the end of the day, it's the council that decides how much money and where they're going to spend it, we become the contractor for you. So we're happy, we're begging for work.
Right.
We've got people to do the work, and I, and I, I'm not laying this at anybody's doorstep, it's, it's a lack of money, and I understand that. Y'all and the, and the administration have your hands full, but we're willing to do the work if you've got the money just to do it, we're, we're all in.
Right. So I'm just looking at the next three years of budgets, there's no money still allocated for this. And so we're going to wait three more years when we're missing out on an opportunity here to do a great project? What, how do we push this conversation, looking at East Beach and some of the success they've had, and we know now that that money has come back to the city, we have an opportunity here, so we, we've got to start looking at these properties and start moving on them a little bit faster, instead of waiting three, four, five, six years, and then we lose a market, you know, we're back where we were before.
If you want to pull out those properties, you know, that you're talking about, we can all have a conversation about properties around the city that we can put infrastructure in, but maybe it's time to tee up that conversation to see. I mean, it won't be but a few months now, we'll be talking about next year's budget.
Right. Yes.
Well, sometimes, again, these budgets you got to put away each year, you got to save. Like, we joke and play, but your predecessor, Bard, you know, against future years on the budget. And that's why there wasn't any funds in the CIP for you to come in and begin to appropriate funds to be able to get a project started like that. But again, you know, when you look at neighborhood plans, we didn't have as many neighborhood plans as we have today. And so, you know, when I first got on council, money went in two directions, you know. Now that we've created all of these other neighborhood plans, to be able to look at the city holistically and try to bring the entire city up to a level where you have parity, where people can live throughout the city opposed to just certain neighborhoods. And so, you know, that's a good thing. But the challenges with that is that you have less money to do, to be aggressive in areas that you were once aggressive in. And so, you know, we get around the table and talk about, you know, what yields the best opportunities for us and bring in the, you know, the dollars a lot faster than, you know, we do feel-good projects and then we do projects that bring in real revenue. And so those are some of the discussions that we have to have.
Well, and I realize not every community has a TIF either.
Well, I knew that we would never get there, that's why I created that. Well, we did that. So in out years when there weren't revenue, we would be able to continue to, you have a TIF enough, but they did it back, they gave the money first and then funded it on the back end, so.
All right, never mind. We're... Okay. St. Paul's.
I have a negative TIF.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council and Board, what I'd like to do is to review with you two items that I know have been a discussion both with our Council and Board over the last several years, the St. Paul's area plan and the CNI grant that NRHA and the city These two programs have become, I would call, married somewhat in the initiative. Starting out with the St. Paul's area plan, there was thought that the process, which involved a lot of players, a lot of partners, to create a vision for St. Paul's. And as a part of that, planning process being an ongoing process, the opportunity for Choice Neighborhood Initiative Grant also came along, what was felt to be toward the end of the area plan process, and therefore the planning grant was submitted to HUD. And we were one of 17 cities in the country to receive the first planning grants of that type. The Choice Neighborhood Grant, again, is, the precursor for that was the HOPE 6 project in Broad Creek. And it's very simple, it's about housing people in neighborhoods. And what this planning grant provided us was an opportunity to look at a broad spectrum of the property and see what partners could be brought together to create an initiative which might lead to an implementation grant of the CNI of about $30 million. There was at least some false hopes, I think generated a couple of years ago, that if you got a planning grant, that puts you first in line for the implementation grant. Well, as soon as that word started being spread around the country, HUD came out very strongly and said that it doesn't necessarily put you in line for the $30 million implementation grant, but you'll be a lot better off than others that haven't gone through that process. So it was still seen as a very competitive process. What we've tried to do is to outline here for today's discussion what occurred, both dovetailing the St. Paul's area plan and the CNI planning grant together, kind of a chronological history. And as you can see, since the summer of 2005, moving through the time period right now, there's been a lot of meetings that we've listed here of the partners, including the city, NRHA, and the community, businesses, churches, and so forth, over this period of time, which has brought us to today. So there's been a lot of work done on both the part of the city with the St. Paul's area plan and also by the Housing Authority jointly with the city on the CNI planning grant.
Mr. Montgomery, can I say something?
Yes, sir.
I think it's important that the council understand, particularly based on some comments I've heard earlier, and this is not, this is just a fact, NRHA was not the leader of this planning process. This is a city-led planning process, and when it started in the summer of 2005, we were mostly the large stakeholder that was there. We had concern when that started, and we continue to have concern, or at least I do personally, that we ensure, and I heard this from some of the council folks, that we ensure that the residents understand that while we're going through this visioning process and we're going through this planning process, that we've identified zero revenue stream to make the plan happen. And we had a lady, I've talked about on a number of occasions, and I'll be quiet in a minute, but I think it's important, who had an annual plan, public hearing over at Ruffner about four or five years ago, stood up and said, "When are you going to rip down Tidewater Gardens?" This was before this process had even started. And I said, and she said, "I know it's a valuable piece of property, it's adjacent to downtown." She was strategically thinking, and she was right. And I said, "There is no plan yet to rip it down, but I think you're right, I think it'll happen. One, it's old, and two, it needs to be refurbished, and it's, where it's located is strategic to the city's growth and its prosperity, but we don't have any money to do that, we have no plan to do." I've continued to say, as we've gone through this planning process with the city, and it has been city-led, it's not an NRHA planning process, although we did apply for the grant and we're getting a different role now. But up until this point, up until we did that, it was city-led. I continue to tell the residents at every opportunity I have, and the board, that we need to be careful because some people are going to be very excited about it, and we're going to let them down, and other people are going to be very fearful about it, and they're going to carry around a lot of fear. And I've tried to be clear over and over and over at every opportunity, that while we're looking at doing this, while there's a desire to do it, while we want to improve that area, there is no funding source that's been identified to do that. We're hopeful there will be one. We're hopeful that when we go through this planning grant, we'll get a real grant, if you will, that Cheryl's been talking about. But right now, unless y'all know something I don't know, there is no real stream of revenue to make it happen. So we need to be careful when we talk about it, that people understand that. Okay, Cheryl.
If you'll notice, on your left is what was called the St. Paul's area plan. And this plan had both a mixed use and a residential component, along with some open space, which also accommodated the post office and the elementary school on the site. As a part of the Choice Neighborhood Initiative, the area to the north of St. Paul's area, called the Expanded Area, included some of the Huntersville, as you know. Anytime we work with a major housing development, such as we did in Broad Creek, all the surrounding neighborhoods want to know what's going on, what's going to happen to them, is, it's going to impact them. And for that reason, the number of partners was increased in this planning initiative that was submitted to include trying to find partnerships and opportunities to support the actions when those came about for St. Paul's area. So this Expanded Area really brought in two public housing areas and surrounding neighborhoods that had to be talked to and so that they would understand what impact, if any, St. Paul's would have on them in the future. As a part of that, the Choice Neighborhood Initiative Planning Grant required a timeline for us. And so in June of 2011, through the current time, there's been a number of meetings held, reports back to HUD, meetings in with the neighborhood groups, trying to define to them what this planning grant would do and what the requirements were. There's still several steps through the process that to be completed by the Housing Authority and the city and these communications. As a part of that, energy with Choice Neighborhood in St. Paul's, there's now even an initiative surrounding PB Young Elementary School that's not within the boundaries of this, to try to create some energy, such as a Harlem Children's Learning Model, that would impact the lives of the schoolchildren at that particular site and the families living within public housing. So all of this energy on both the St. Paul's plan and the CNI planning grant has created a lot of interest. One, to do something to improve the quality of life in this entire area, which is both a residential, a business impact, and even an educational impact, that maybe we didn't realize at the first of this process, but that's what it's evolved into. As a part of that, there are several pieces that are needed to move forward. As we know, the St. Paul's visioning and the housing program continues to be discussed. It needs some agreement. There's a lot of supportive services that currently go on with the residents in our self-sufficiency program. We know that there's some land use decisions in and around that area that have to be made. And we know for sure that there are infrastructure needs, such as any major redevelopment project will have. And also, we need to create some consensus for funding and how it'll be implemented. Tidewater, the deed for that land is owned by HUD. It's not owned by the authority or the city. So whatever the plan that's created to develop St. Paul's or any of these other public housing areas, need the full support and approval of HUD before we can move forward. As an example, I think the Vice Mayor's mentioned it several times, the Broad Creek, it took well over 10 years to move forward with that project just because of HUD monitoring, HUD rules, community meetings, getting the residents ready to move out of the community, and the demolition. So it is a long and arduous process, but we all know that there's steps to take to move forward. One of the pieces that we feel is the next step is that we're going to continue to talk to HUD over the next six months about the grant requirements and the timeline, which right now is June of 2013. We want to continue to discuss with our board what NRHA's recommendations are on moving forward. And then we would like to bring that to the city administration for a briefing and discussion with city council. Basically, we want to develop this action plan jointly with the city and move forward on the redevelopment of the St. Paul's area.
Cheryl.
Yes, sir.
That grant, that $30 million grant.
Yes, sir.
What is attached to that $30 million grant?
I can tell you what's not attached to it, no infrastructure money.
No, no, no. In terms of people, you know, we talk about federal dollars and what's associated and attached with federal dollars.
Okay.
What's attached with that $30 million grant?
Okay, there'll be some funds in there for, Don L. already has self-sufficiency efforts going on with the residents to relocate them, move them up and out. Federal government will give us additional money for that. It'll give us money for relocation. They may give them a choice for vouchers and fund that. There will be some capital money available to build new housing units once we decide what we want to build. So it'll be a combination of those things, very similar to Broad Creek.
Right, but, and I say that to say, once you filter through the $30 million, then when you look at how much money is actually available for construction, it's really not a whole lot of money there to be able to accomplish something like that.
Total.
Right.
It'll have, we'll have to pull more and more resources together. It will not be all the money that we need to complete the project.
If we get it.
If we get it, yes.
Cheryl, how much would it cost to date to maybe duplicate a Hunter Square, roughly? Yeah, I know that might be a tough question to answer, but I guess my point is, and I've been saying this for over 10 years, because they've been talking about some type of either renovation of Tidewater, total demolition of Tidewater for over 10 years. And nothing has been done to start moving the residents, like building a senior citizen or mid-rise or something like that. I continue to say that we would probably be amazed at the number of residents who live in Tidewater, who just wonder when the bulldozer is coming, you know, and each night, you know, they're wondering, you know, what their future's going to be. So I've always thought, and this might not be as simple as this, to get an inventory of the persons who live in Tidewater, you have your seniors. It was an article, I'm sure you all know or remember, about four or five years ago, where there are more children that live in Tidewater than adults. And then we need to find a place, you know, to create a nice neighborhood for those persons. And then those persons who are close enough to be homeowners, that they come through your project and become homeowners. But there's a lot of anxiety among the older women and men who live in Tidewater because they don't know when it's going to change. And so I look at a couple of pieces of property, like at Tidewater Drive from Virginia Beach Boulevard, would be adjacent to Calvary Towers, wondering if it would be prudent to maybe build a senior facility there. And somehow, I believe that while we're sitting around waiting to see what HUD is going to do, maybe we can find some other grant money, whether it's with a church. The Church of God in Christ was the first organization to build a high-rise here up at 2400 Virginia Beach Boulevard. And so I'm just wondering, is some type of partnership that we can form now to, if we don't have the money, the city doesn't have the money, to get some of these facilities built, to remove the anxiety from the seniors that are living in Tidewater, knowing that something's going to happen or something like that?
Mr. Reddick, one of the, maybe as an example to go to your point, if we build a mid-rise, say two stories, 15 units on each floor, 100 units for seniors, that'd be, and we own the land, it'd be about probably $11 million. That's a good pool of, $5 million for each 50 units.
But even when we move those people out of Tidewater Gardens, you can't just keep those units vacant. We have to replace them with someone, correct? I mean, we can't just leave them vacant.
That's what HUD expects us to do because we have a waiting list with a lot of people on them.
So we still got to put people back in them that may have the same kind of fear.
You mean in the units that we vacate?
If you have, if you have 100, if we do an inventory and find that we have 100 senior citizens that could go into a senior mid-rise, and we move those 100 people out, we can't leave those units vacant.
Can we tear them down? If we know that we have a redevelopment, and this would be a redevelopment project because you're going to demolish the whole area. And so I'm just saying that as you move along, as if you do find those 100 or 200 vacancies, then at that point, you know, you close those units down and you begin your demolition and start getting ready for whatever project you're going to, you know. I don't know the answer to those questions.
And it is, it's a difficult one because as you look at each one of the public housing units, there may be eight units or 10 units there and maybe one senior there. So you move that one senior out, you still can't tear the building down because there's eight other families still living there.
Unless...
Unless you start moving people around.
Unless the covenant has run out on Tidewater Gardens. That, was it?
HUD still requires this, you know, they still...
Right, but you, I mean, you will essentially give up all of your public housing monies, but you could, at this time, have the land transferred back to the city. but you could, at this time, have the land transferred back to the city. Could you not?
With HUD approval?
Right.
And a plan, and a plan on what to do, how the residents are going to be taken care of, where they're going.
That's the only, that's the only way that I know that you could begin to vacate those units and begin to move folk out and not occupying the units again, unless, yeah.
So what you're saying is that if we have six units, buildings, and we could say move people out a building at a time, take all the people out, board the unit up, we could get that, we could transfer that unit back or that building back, demolish it, and then move on to the next building?
It's not quite that simple because you forfeit all of your public housing monies. The federal monies that you get annually to support your public housing, it would stop.
Okay, but that particular, for Tidewater Gardens, okay, so then the city would have to take on the responsibility of that particular, that particular housing complex, but then we could also go about moving those people out and tearing those units down?
Yeah, which would be a nightmare because you would, you would essentially create what people were afraid of in the early 60s, that you don't have the infrastructure money to be able to support a smooth move for all of the folk right now, deal something in the absence of all of the people. You could accommodate some, you could give Section 8 vouchers to some, but you wouldn't be able to effectively deal with the population of people like you should be.
And I don't mean move them all at one time, I mean over a period of time.
But you, but once you do it, you, once you do it, you lose your money.
Okay, so it's all enough?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, okay.
How many units in Tidewater Gardens? I think we...
618.
How much?
618.
I didn't hear that.
618.
Maybe we could schedule some time in January to come back and, Marcus, and revisit just the St. Paul's area. It seems to me, and I don't want to be too simplistic about this, but we seem to, if you go back to the other, to the map up there, I mean, we ought to, at some point, we ought to all agree on what we're trying to do. And if the idea is what we're trying to do is to, you know, create a mixed-use project there on, at St. Paul's, then we ought to talk about that. I thought we went into this thing with the idea of trying to improve the life of the people that lived in Tidewater Gardens. I mean, at the, when we first started talking about that is how can we improve, if you look at what the city did to these people years ago, wrapped the highways and the interstate around them, and turned the back of the old downtown plaza and sort of blockaded the people in there. We actually, Church Street went away. But this gave us an opportunity to really improve, I mean, how do we improve the lives of the people who live there? And if we use the opportunity that the fact we've gotten this property to do it, then I think then we try to figure out how we march in that direction, as opposed to, I see Frank, every now and then Frank will come up here and talk about mixed-use developments and all that sort of stuff. I want to, first of all, figure out how we improve the life of the people who live there. And we had just a very simple plan at one time, is you came in and you rebuilt Church Street and turned it, maybe you took it over to St. Paul's and over to Freemason. Then you started building houses in a phased, or some units on a phased way on the other side of Church Street, on the St. Paul's side of Church Street. Then move some people over there, or create, you know, carve out, you know, blocks of places, and then come back and then try to redevelop on the other side where you could create a real neighborhood. But I don't know how you get there from here, but that was my goal, that's what I thought we wanted to do, as opposed to just, and I think it's great to create a tax base, and I'm all for that, and jobs and all that sort of, I mean, I understand you can maybe, you know, have your cake and eat it too, but, but what I really want to do is try to figure out, what's the best way to improve the lives of these people who have, I mean, just look what we did to them in there, and we ought to do better. Our folks, you know, and we ought to figure out, maybe that ought to be our goal, and then everything else falls behind that.
And maybe some of the council people need to go to some successful communities that have done just that. I mean, you go to Atlanta...
But tell us what the obstacles are to us to get there and then, okay.
They built, they built people, and they did it by having, they did six, Hope Six projects, okay? And every Hope Six project was different throughout that city, but at the end of the day, they, they were able to create healthy communities, disperse poverty, give people real opportunities, and have mixed, mixed income communities with high rises, with golf courses running through. You couldn't tell where public housing started and when market rate began. And whether it be downtown beside Georgia Tech, or, you know, sprawling outside the borders of their suburbs, they did, they did a good job in terms of doing exactly what we're trying to do here. But at the end of the day, it was not about bricks and mortar, it was about people.
And that's, you know, and I, those were some nice examples, Anthony, but I'm talking about this piece of property right here. Once we got the planning stage moved north out of the St. Paul's area, it took on a different life, and it took on a whole lot of different considerations rather than, the people in Tidewater Gardens deserve better, you know, and the city will be healthier if their lives are healthier, by the way. And how do we go about doing that in a phased fashion that doesn't scare the heck out of them, but, you know, actually, we can build some trust with them? And I think we ought to try to emphasize, and I don't, again, I don't think we can do it today, and, you know, I don't want to, you know, spend another couple hours because I really want our best thinkers in here in the room when we do that, but, but I think that's what, and then the city's got to have to come up with some money, or we ought to stop talking about that.
But you got infrastructure issues.
Yeah, I know, I hear you.
And I don't know how we do that with people, leaving them in an area that does have the infrastructure issues, that does have the flooding, that the school, every time there's three drops of rain, you know, the kids need a bucket to, you know, I don't know how we do that and leave those, leave people in that same area. I think it requires moving people and dispersing them, moving children so that they see more than poverty on a daily basis, you know, and I think that takes, it takes a plan and it takes money.
Okay.
Yeah.
So do, have we, who's driving the train?
Well, that's a good one. That's maybe that's because we got two different, we got the Housing Authority with the plan and the city with the plan. They have to be melted.
When was the last time the city did development? When was the last time the city got, did housing go?
Ever, never.
So why are they driving the train?
Why is the city...
I mean, you're talking about a population of people who are under an offer of redevelopment housing authority.
Because, I guess the question is, because we bought the property for it, so many millions of bucks way back when, and then, and we bought it with, one of the things we thought, when we tore down the downtown plaza, was that this was a way we could have helped the folks who lived there. And, you know, with a, with a plan, that's out of the city because we own the property.
You own the plaza property, right?
Yes, we, that's right.
Right, but that's just half of the property.
I got, I know that. So I guess we need to work that out.
Who's driving the train? At the end of the day, who's, who, who's going to be held responsible for the planning going forward of the St. Paul Quadrant? You know, and are we open, and I guess the more, more important question, the types of money, how open are you to, because we've done project, and I, we've done projects around the city, we use different pots of money, you know. Over the years, I've realized that there are good, there's good federal money, there's not so good federal money, you know. So the question is, you know, what types of money are we going to use to be able to take down an elephant like this? Because there is no more Hope Six. You know, you got the Choice Neighborhood, but that doesn't get you there. So the city's going to have to put in, you know, and you got other projects that are still open, whether it be Ocean View or other places that still have infrastructure issues that have been on the table for quite some time. So now you're going to open another project up without finishing the ones that you currently have to deal with. So I, again, those are the types of questions that I would like to have.
Reality check.
Ultimately, put it on the back of an offer redevelopment housing authority. We give them X number of dollars, whether it be CDBG money, and these other funds, but that ain't enough to, to be able to deal with some of these issues. So I just like to understand, at the end of the day, who's driving the train? Because people do ask questions as relates to the St. Paul Quadrant. If I was to tell somebody today, based on where we are, it's not going to happen in the next 10 years, based on where we are today.
All right, we'll, we'll try to answer that question in a few months when we come together, just the St. Paul's area plan and the Choice Neighborhood issue. Okay?
Mr. Mayor, let me say one last thing before you adjourn us. We're appreciative of the opportunity to come and dialogue with you in this format. We obviously would like more opportunities. I think the first bullet on Cheryl's piece of how we can work better together was communication, and I will tell you, not to sort of compare it, but it's, it's much, much better today. We have a lot of communication, our working relationship is better with staff from top to bottom, and we're excited about that. We're in the business of doing work for you and for the federal government, and we're open for business, and we're looking for business. So back to your point, Councilman Smigiel and others, you know, we're here to serve you and to do your work, and we think we do a pretty good job. We've got 300 dedicated employees, and not to lose sight of the problems that we have and the challenges we have, and we've laid some of those out to you today. I've got something I'm going to give you a copy of. A month or so ago, one of our employees in a yard sale bought a bunch of books and came across a annual report from 1946. That was the year the Norfolk Housing Authority became the Norfolk Redevelopment Housing Authority. And it has pictures in here that would, for most of us who weren't here in 1946, are somewhat disturbing, but it does demonstrate in many ways how far we've come as a city from those days to today, what it looked like then and what we're talking about now. We're certainly not where we need to be, but we've come a long way. So I'm going to give out some copies of this, just as something you can peruse and go through. It's interesting to look at. And so again, I appreciate you.
Sure, thank you. Good discussion, appreciate it. Okay, we will let you guys go. A little more work to do.
I would see you again.
Maybe an area that we really need to examine was signage, and we're going to examine it ourselves and bring you through the administration a particular report that would go with that. Also with regard to, Marcus, this is one that we may be able to take care of quicker than that. If you notice, as you go across from where TCC is and the entrance to the mall, there's some crime tape, it's yellow. Well, that was put up by the officer, Officer Lapica, in fact, because what was happening is people were walking from TCC right through the garden that they have there, that courtyard, and they weren't crossing at the crosswalk, and trains were forced to stop. They're not paying attention, they're on their cell phones or they're texting, and they're walking right out into traffic, because it's simple and it looks natural. So Officer Lapica put up crime tape, and some of the tape is still up, some was cut yesterday, to just, and what he's, what we're looking at and what his recommendation is, and perhaps this is something we can do a little bit quicker than the other two, which you'll get, it'll come through the administrative process, this is really for council, is to put up railing. You know, we have railing throughout light rail areas. It would be to have railing put up that would force you to go to the crosswalk. You just can't cross from TCC to the mall, and it, you know, it would, I mean, Lapica has told people, don't do it, the crime tape has stopped people from doing it, it forces them to go left or right. But that's something, we need a little bit more permanent solution. If it's just some of that really attractive railing, that may stop that. And again, that was something we discussed. Lastly, we did talk about Fourth View briefly, but that seems to be a perpetual thing. And last, and I will say, and lastly, we discussed the speeding on Hampton Boulevard. And we've asked, in the January meeting, we've asked that a liaison officer comes from the naval base so we can somehow get together with them and talk about, at least an education process for sailors, for civilians that work on the base, about Hampton Boulevard and the speeds on Hampton Boulevard. Personally, I've witnessed it, a lot of tags are out of state, a lot of people are in uniform, not everybody. And I don't want to indict with a broad brush, but it is the main thoroughfare that connects Portsmouth and the base, and it is used a lot by the Navy. So we'd like to be able to do an education discussion with them on what do we need to do to educate people on the speeds on Hampton Boulevard. That was what came about. I apologize, I didn't do it in writing, but that's my report to you. And then hopefully we'll have some recommendations in January on those other issues that I talked about, the accidents, and could be a prospective accident happening at TCC. But the administration did a very fine job in attending and taking care of that. Thank you, that's all I have. Thanks.
I don't have anything except I'm still waiting for you, Anthony, I'm giving up on you. Somebody else can give me the last three or four years amount of tax refund.
I will get it from the building.
You're the statute of limitations tax on you. Marcus, could you get that?
I'll get it from the, from the vice mayor.
Anthony, you have?
One, I know we had a discussion about the balance that has been taking place within our city.
The what?
Valence.
Valence.
I'm more so concerned with weapons. I, you know, I listen to people talk, and I do know that, that we have an abundance of young people who, for one reason or another, want to rob people. So I know that there's a lot of that going on, but again, I do believe that we need to have a strategic plan, looking at our problematic areas and, you know, you can look at com stats, or that gives you some data, but I truly believe that the guys that are out there every day on the street have more intelligence to be able to tell us where the more problematic areas are and where we need to concentrate our efforts in terms of combating this issue as relates to not only youth violence, but the weapons that are on the street. And I know that, you know, folk don't like to talk about problems that exist in their cities, but just like we, you know, it took a while for us to talk about the gang situation. Once we talked about it, other municipalities not only implemented like strategies, but they also want to step further and implement it within their classroom, make it a part of their curriculum. And so I'm not afraid to talk about things that are happening in our city, because if we don't, then we can't solve the problems that are happening. We talk about all the good things, but these good things get beat down when you have an isolated incident or incidents like that. It makes people think twice whether or not they want to live in this city, raise their families in this city. So I would rather be on the front end and be proactive and look long-term and say, you know what, we dealt with this issue, the city is a lot safer for it, and families are moving here. Because the types of investments that we're making, in my opinion, mean that we have to protect those investments. And so if we have issues that are taking place in communities, isolated incidents, where we could draw a circle around it, then we need to deal with it. And so I said it again, I don't bite my tongue when I say this, but there has to be a way that we begin to hold parents responsible for their children's actions. And again, in certain areas where we have an offer redevelopment and housing authority, I know they said earlier that, you know, offer redevelopment housing puts people out, they don't put people out. Anybody that has ever gotten put out of public housing got put out by the courts. There's a process that one has to go through. So you cannot put them out, whether it be for financial or any other issues. I mean, they can have drug charges, and they cannot put them out. They can do 72 hours, but at the end of the day, they got to go to court, and a judge physically removes them from the property. So again, all I'm asking is that we look at resources that we do have, and programs that we do have, and services that we do have, and begin to, again... that we do have, and services that we do have, and begin to, again, at least come back in areas that we know that are problematic, at least come back and say, look, we have a plan, and this is the issue, and we're working on them, and, you know, three, six months from now, we've been able to do this, 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 this. That's important. Okay? That's all I have.
I don't have anything.
Three things. Can we get an update on red light cameras and the status of that? I believe the last time we discussed it was going out on contract or something with that. Also, Councilman Winn and I would be interested in an update on the travelers' end and what the status of that is, and if the property owner is not willing to work with the city, then we need to get a little bit stronger and maybe possibly look at eminent domain with that. It's an eyesore, it's been like that since February, and whatever legal route we need to go, if that property owner's not going to work with us, we need to, we need to move for.
When you say work with us, you mean like sell it to us?
Yes, yeah, for an affordable, yeah. Reasonable. And I spoke at the Wards Corner Task Force meeting at a different capacity, but one of the things that I brought up, and it might be something that we have to talk with the school system about, there used to be a truancy center, a truancy location at Wards Corner, where all kids that were caught by police during the school day, they would bring them to the center and they'd be processed there, the parents would have to come and pick them up, and it actually was a beneficial thing, because it inconvenienced the parents. What happened with budget cuts is now the police bring them back to the school, and with the day-to-day operations of the school and what's happening, sometimes it, they don't get to those kids as fast enough as they should, so referrals written, or something with skipping or being caught by the police. And I'm just curious to find out how much that actually cost, if it was just one of those things, that it was easy to get rid of it, and would it help with some of the day crime that we have? I believe that was one of the issues that was brought up at Wards Corner, was students that were out there and could be causing problems with it, you know, and the schools are doing what they can with it, sometimes you can't control that, but it was definitely a benefit for the school system, and I don't know who was paying for that, if it was a school system item or if it was through the city. I'd be interested in hearing, you know, how much that really costs and whether or not the impact of losing it was as big on our crime day-to-day.
That's it.
Thank you, Tom. I hope everybody got a copy of this Amtrak inaugural train schedule, you ought to take a look at that. Secretary of Transportation, Ray Luthard, is going to be on there, which means, as well as the governor. And if you can come on December 11th, please do it. Thelma Drake's obviously going to be there, but the Amtrak Board of Directors, CEOs of Norfolk Southern and CSX, so there's a schedule on here, but part of the idea is to make sure that we get in everybody's ear about the fact that we need a dedicated funding source. We've only got a couple of years' worth of funding for operations, and we need to be able to, we need more trainings, and we need it sooner rather than later. This will be, this will be a unique opportunity to actually speak to the right guys. Secondly, I handed out this, I saw the Richmond paper yesterday, they had another anti-poverty event, which we'll get up and running here shortly, but they link poverty to transit, of course, jobs, but also they've invited the faith-based community to be a significant participant in their attempts to eradicate poverty in Richmond. So I think we've got, we've got faith-based participation in our Poverty Commission as well. Tomorrow morning at 8:00 at Scope, if you've got a chance to come out to Homeless Connect, there will be approximately 600 volunteers tomorrow morning at Scope, they'll get there before 8:00. We expect to have about 500 homeless people come, we may have more. We'll have one volunteer at least for every homeless person to walk through the entire process, but it will do your heart good to see, to be there and to see the good work that the administration is doing. And also, we're going to thank the Hampton Roads Community Foundation for their support, and they also got a national award for their participation with us in this Homeless Connect and their homeless activity. So if you get a chance, if you don't do anything else, you ought to come, you ought to see this where.
It goes on all day.
Yeah, but it starts, it's basically, we sort of open the doors at 8:00, and the line starts forming before that, and, you know, these guys, they get dental work, they get, you name it, not only haircuts, but they get health checkups, some people get jobs, some people, I mean, we, 13 of them last year got housing. You know, they get IDs, they get into the system, we get to know them, what their issues are, some of them get the phone home for free. I mean, it's, it is, it will do your heart good if you get a chance to come out at 8:00 tomorrow morning. Andy mentioned this, putting a rail up there over by TCC. I still think we need a rail at, on St. Paul's, across from where the new courthouse, in between there and the bus station, just one of those rails there that would push people back to the intersection. And then, Anthony, this is not a response to what you said about, about the violence piece, because I do agree with you that we need to do more, but the last time I saw some stats on violence in the city, the violence, we've had, you know, just about the same level of violent acts committed this year as we did last year, actually, three or four fewer as of the end of September, and that was down significantly from the year before, down a year. We've actually had about three or four years of pretty good rates of drops of violent crime in the city. That's not to say we couldn't do more. The other thing that we did do, and this will sort of speak to one of your questions, is there were 30 police officers that were taken out of booking, but those police officers, when we asked the chief what he was going to do with them, he divided them basically into groups of seven or eight, and they were going to be moved into some of those neighborhoods that you talked about to address, you know, spikes in violence. So I think there is some effort underway.
I respect, I respect your.
It wasn't a response to what you said, I just...
No, I know, but when I look at, within a three-mile radius, to lose over seven, eight young people between the age of 18 to 25, in my ward, that's alarming to me. When I, when I look at the types of weapons that these young people have, it's alarming to me, because these are the streets that I walk, these are the communities that I walk, and these are the folk that we all serve. And so I, it's isolated. This is, when you look at the number, it's not happening throughout the entire city. It is happening in areas that we can pinpoint the social and economic issues that derive in those communities. So to me, it is, it is a serious problem, and I get tired of turning on the TV, whether it be north of any other community, that there's a young person who looks like me, who's losing his or her life every day, you know, to senseless violence, whether somebody is pulling the trigger that has no orientation of how to use a weapon, or whether or not it's someone trying to take something that does not belong to them. And so I hear what folk are saying on the street, okay? And so I'm, I'm very concerned about what is happening in a city that I serve and in a community that I serve.
I share your concern, okay? And I'm concerned about crime wherever it occurs. And it doesn't, it doesn't matter where it occurs, or to whom it occurs, in the city. We're concerned about crime wherever it happens, so I just thought I'd make that comment, so. All right, well, unless there's anything else for us to adjourn.
Thank you, Anthony. Is this year-to-date, well, is it pro-rated?
What, wait, 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 what?
October 30th, Council.
October 30th, we have the Legislative Dinner. They have from 4:30 to 6:30, right here in the 10th floor conference room. We're not going to some fancy restaurant, we're going to meet right here, October 30th. Please come in.